I assure the prayer and pledge of allegiance. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this state our day and right, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory of our heaven.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Joel, are we muted?
Nope.
Somebody sent me a text that we're muted. We were. Oh, okay. Okay, moving on to item C, approval of minutes from July 6th, 2020, from the regular council meeting. In the absence of any objections or corrections, the minute shall stand approved. Stand approved. Item D, citizen communication. Anyone in the audience that would like to address council with anything other than what's on the agenda, please speak now or type in on the WebEx meeting and we will get to your questions. Item E, reports from council committees. Electric committee. Lori?
All right, thank you, Council President. We accepted the BOPA's recommendation to approve the July 2020 PSCA three-month averaged factor, 0.02841, and JV2, 0.018805, and also accepted the BOPA's recommendation to take $100,000 from the electric reserve fund and apply it as a credit to each active meter equally.
Okay, thank you very much. Item EB, the Water Sewer Refuge Recycling and Litter Committee.
Receive progress report on the wastewater treatment plant project, which is moving along quite well at this time. We're going to do probably two projects into one, which is good news for us. And discuss malt juice at the yard waste site and also refer to council discussion on number of tags used for disposable tires during unlimited cleanup.
Thank you, Jeff.
Yes, sir.
And item E, City Municipal Properties Building Land Use Economic Development Committee did not meet on July 13th due to lack of agenda items and nor did the Parks and Rec Committee meet tonight due to lack of agenda items. Item G, introduction of new ordinances and resolutions. G1 is ordinance number 031-20 and ordinance supplementing the annual appropriation measure, supplement number three for the year 2020, and declaring an emergency. And suspension is requested for this as well. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Hey, Kelly?
Thank you. The first supplemental is for Fund 220, the recreation fund. This is to appropriate $7,500. It's part of the insurance money that we received from the accident. The second is for Fund 250, the local coronavirus refund. This is appropriating the money that we received, the $203,673.98. And the last one is for Fund 400, the capital improvement fund. The court secured a grant for coronavirus emergency supplemental funding in the amount of $55,371 for a total appropriation of $266,544.98. And the court grant is for a fingerprint system, video conferencing equipment, PPE and sanitizing supplies, and ServiceMaster to clean the carpet and sanitize.
Thank you, Kelly. Any questions or comments? And can you tell us what the reason is for suspension being requested?
So that we can start expensing the stuff for the court and to pay the collision center for the vehicle and to start using the money for the relief fund once we have recommendations for you.
Thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion for suspension if someone would like to make that.
So moved. I'll second.
Okay, Rocks, please call the roll on suspension.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Any other questions or comments regarding the ordinance? Hearing none, Rocks, please call the roll.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Okay, that has passed on first read under suspension. Moving on to item G2, ordinance number 032-20 and ordinance approving current June 2020 replacement pages to the City of Napoleon codified ordinances. Do you have a motion?
Motion.
I'll second.
Hey, Joel?
Thank you, Council President. As we do twice per year, we have a company that used to be Walter Drain Company, now American Legal Publishing Corporation, go through our codified ordinances and make necessary changes. So this is in your packets. You probably saw copies of everything. So everything in yellow is highlighted as changing. Requesting first read.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, Rocks, please call the roll.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item H, second reads of ordinances and resolution. H1 is resolution number 029-20, a resolution authorizing the expenditure of funds in excess of $25,000 for the purpose of constructing a commercial pool and to enter into a contract with Astro Pools for said construction and declaring an emergency. Suspension is requested as well. Have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Joel?
Thank you. This is, as we've discussed in previous meetings, to enter into a contract with Astro Pools for the pool project. We are planning to bring the specifications for the building, the aquatic center golf club, to the next council meeting to be bid separately. And right now, the contract would be for $1.1... I'm sorry, $1.612 million. This would cover the slides, the pool features, except for the main pool feature, which will be purchased separately but installed by Astro and all the tech space and everything that's associated with the pool portion of the project. So the reason why we're requesting suspension, as I mentioned before, is that we'd like to get the project under contract so that they can start sooner. A lot of this equipment that they're purchasing is custom to this pool and this design. So, you know, ordering parts, materials for this project, the timing of that delivery is crucial to keeping this project on schedule. If that'll take any questions. Also, Tony and Chad are on the line to answer any questions as well.
I'll make motion for suspension then.
Second.
All right, any questions or comments regarding suspension? Hey, Rocks, please call the roll.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Any questions or concerns on the resolution? Hearing none, Rocks, please call the roll.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
That has passed under suspension on first read.
Second read.
I'm sorry, second read. Thank you. Okay, moving on to item I, we have none. Item J, Good as a City. J1, discussion or action, approval of the PSCA F for July 2020 as PSCA three-month average factor, 0.02841 and JV2, 0.018805. Joel?
Thank you. We did apply the $100,000 out of the reserve fund directly to the rates, which did bring it down from around 14 cents a kilowatt hour to about 13.7 cents a kilowatt hour. And other than that, this was the highest power supply cost adjustment factor that we've seen. And there is a direct correlation between what's been happening with coronavirus and the shutdowns, especially of businesses, and the spike in the three-month rolling average for power supply cost adjustment factors. So, you know, with the reserve fund that we have, you know, firmly believe that that was a good use of funds to help, you know, the rate payers at this point. But, you know, this is just to accept the power supply cost adjustment factor as is, and then the next item is related to the other electric committee applying an additional $100,000. So any questions on this month's power supply cost adjustment factor?
No, sir. Have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Hey, Rocks, please call the roll.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
That's been approved. Item J2 is discussion or action on taking $100,000 from the electric reserve fund and apply it as a credit to each active meter equally. Joel?
Thank you. We discussed applying an additional $100,000 directly into the rates. The electric committee did wind up approving the use of $100,000, but applying it to each meter. In your weekly FYI, you saw the number of meters that we had in the July billing cycle, which was 5,971 total meters. And the different customer classes were also identified in that. Most of them, obviously, are residential. So applying that to each individual meter equates to approximately $16.75 per count. So that'll be, if the council approves that, will be applied to each account. And we are looking into to see how, if CMI can... how to label that in the bills. And I believe what we were planning on doing is having a separate line item as a council-approved credit, something like that, for the next billing cycle.
Great. Anybody have any questions or comments regarding this? I guess I'll just kind of bring up what we talked about in the electric committee meeting. I was surprised myself with the little effect it had doing the first $100,000. It really didn't benefit a lot of the residents like I had thought that it would. And with having a decent amount in that electric reserve fund, I thought spreading it out amongst the residents, affecting them a little bit more at this time, would be the right thing to do. So I'm glad that we had that discussion on last Monday and that the board or the committee felt... the board and the committee both felt that it was important to do that. And then we can always look at a month from now and see where we're at and what we can do to help in the future. Any other questions or comments?
The way it read, it looked like we really helped the industrial customers out last month and we really helped the residential customers out this month. So it's kind of a fair way to do it, help some. And then if everybody's going to help this month, then we'll be able to help last month. So it's helping everybody, trying to help everybody as much as we can. So, yeah, it's a good change. I like the change.
I agree. The newspaper didn't really reflect the discussion in the committee, I didn't think, because Ross and Joe... I think it was Ross's idea, but, you know, Joe has had to calculate her out in figuring it out because until you see it on paper, it is kind of hard to understand what, you know, keeping it below 13 cents is going to do for the average citizen. And so, once it was clear, then I thought that was a great idea to just help our residents out for this, during this time, too. Especially when you suggest up the way that it is. So $16 is $16.
Yep. Better than $2.42.
I think it's a good idea. My only question is if I'm in favor of this issue, but the status of our reserve fund is not in any danger at this point.
Yeah, I can pull that. Rotate it. That's what I've been going off of is... I don't have it in a different report, but basically, going off of the, you know, the monthly reports and what is showing up, we'd have about... was 7.6 million, now 7.5 million, and this would be about 7.4. But it all depends on, you know, the collections that come in and then where do we wind up at the end of the year? If you remember, two years ago, we didn't factor in the power supply costs accurately because of the... we didn't know how hard the hydro plants were going to hit that at that fund and how much our power supply costs were going to go up. So that, you know, that's why you've got to have a healthy reserve, too, because, you know, that put us down at the $5 million mark from the $8 million mark at the time. So just roughly $3 million swing. You know, I don't want to get into the weeds here a little bit, but it's safe to say that our electric fund is healthy enough to be able to absorb this.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? We would need a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Rocks, please call the roll.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Okay, that has been approved. Moving on to J3, discussion or action on number of tags required for disposal of tires during unlimited pickup. Joel?
Yeah, thank you. We've got Chad and Jeff Rathke on the line, too. So, but in the packet, you'll see in the memo what was presented. It's just, you know, these are always, you know, sanitation fund is healthy, okay? It's just, we start there. But what we always look at is what services are we providing and what is it costing that fund? And what I always track is, you know, where are we going to wind up or where are we projecting to be at the end of the year? There's a few factors that go into this, you know, for this year at least. We did have the sanitation worker position. We haven't had CCNO, so a good thing we did that, right? So we haven't had CCNO, and actually, we're looking at potentially just phasing them out completely. There is a cost to having CCNO. Don't, you know, make no bones about it. There's a cost to the drive time to pick them up and take them back every day, plus, you know, you don't know what kind of, what, how many people you're going to get on a daily basis even, whether it's one or four or however many. So it's just, it's a difficult program to manage for the managers and, you know, for Jeff and his team and Chad. So we're looking at phasing them out completely. We're also added the bag. That's, you know, that's, you know, that's a good service. And I think the fund will be able to handle that one, too. So, but we're always looking at ways to shave costs, too, to make sure that we're not, you know, slowly eating away at that reserve that we have there that makes it so healthy. So one of the things is tires. Also, you know, looking at the big picture, we're keeping in mind that our recycling contract is up this year. So when the recycling contract is up, all indicators are pointing to that, you know, recycling in general is not a profitable commodity. And at one point, it was, which is, you know, what we believe to be the reason for having the single bag. I know I'm kind of talking in a... I'm talking at the 30,000-foot view right now. But it's, you know, the one bag was put in place because recyclables were profitable. You wanted people to recycle. You wanted them to throw everything they could into the recycling bins at the time. Now, it's becoming very inefficient and that recycling material is considered a commodity. And that commodity is not profitable for municipalities right now, especially the commingled materials. So that's why, you know, we just brought this up as an awareness thing. Tire prices, disposal of tires is up. I think everybody is aware that the county increased their rates for tire disposal, and rightfully, I mean, that's just... that's part of doing business and disposing of tires because they're... that's the impossible thing, you know? Disposing of tires is one of those impossible tasks, you know, to manage. It's, you know, we keep producing them, yet we don't have a good way to get rid of them. And, you know, that's really kind of the trend that's been going on. We're very lucky to have that shredding facility, but the county did increase their charges to dispose of tires. So therefore, what we saw was an actual increase in the unlimited number of tires. They doubled the amount of tires in unlimited pickup this year, and that's a service that we provide. So they put a tag... Basically, what happens is for a regular car tire, somebody can put a tag on it, $2 tag on a tire and will come pick it up. That's been implemented as part of the rules. You know, we did see the increase. So it's not just the disposal of tires that's an issue either because when you look down here, we're just... we're looking at a, you know, the highlighted area. We're not talking huge dollars here, but we're seeing a trend. We just, you know, we just wanted to point it out. We're seeing a trend here that, you know, are we going to see this number go up in the coming, you know, months, years, whatever? So it's just an awareness thing. It was a suggestion to, you know, increase the rates, which, you know, disposal rates for these types of tires. You're talking passenger cars, semi trucks, and tractor tires. These are the number of the tags that they're required to put on them. It was suggested to double that since that's the going rate for disposal now. It actually might be a little bit more than that. I think it's around the $5 or $6 range for a regular car tire. That's... that was just a note, a notation. If nothing happens now, we'll be fine. For now. If it turns into an issue or, let's say, in the future, we start to see, you know, increases in our recyclables and increases in some of these other things that we do. There's a lot of things that go into the sanitation fund, a lot of smaller operational items, bugs, mosquito spraying, anything. All these different things that get rolled into it. We're just trying to make sure we're covering our costs. So if we start to see that we're trending in the opposite direction for the sanitation fund, this is a definite way to improve that, make sure that we're not losing money on disposal of tires. But understanding that this is a service that we provide. You don't want to diminish your services, but at the same time, still got to cover your costs. So it's more of an awareness thing. This was the suggestion here. Other than that, we can... we can interrupt questions. Actually, I apologize. Jeff or Chad, I didn't know if you wanted to add anything to that or mention anything related to tires.
I would real briefly, just to point out that that... it's not a rate for everybody. It's a user fee. So if the person doesn't put any tires out, there's no increase. It's only for the person that is putting the tire out. So just point that out.
Thanks, Jeff. So the committee just recommended to have a discussion with full council rather than take any action at this time. So there was no recommendation one way or the other on what to do with tires from the committee.
I'm very comfortable leaving rates where they are and seeing how the fall cleanup goes. And if they come in comparable to spring, we have to consider this. But as of right now, we've heard time and time again, sanitation fund is fine, sanitation fund is fine. And I'm glad this stuff comes up, but if we're fine, then we're fine. We'll see how it goes in the fall. Maybe we've got a lot of tires went out this time. Maybe not next time. We'll see how it goes. I know it doubled from 110 to 220. If it's, you know, ballparked the same 220, then we've got, we've probably got to change something. If it backed down to the 110 number, it's, you know... we'll see where we're at. That's kind of where I'm at with it.
We see a boatload of tractor tires. We know they're not, probably not coming from Napoleon.
Right.
I guess you do run that risk if the landfill raises the rate to accept them and we stay significantly less, that they would get dumped here to go in our... So I guess I agree. I don't see a problem, but I can understand why we would probably want to sort of stay in line with our cost to dispose of them.
That's my thought also. That's encouraging people to come here and dump their tires because it's going to save them, save them money, which ultimately costs each one of us, city taxpayers, additional money.
But you've got to remember, we don't take tires unless they're tagged.
Right.
True.
But if it's tagged at half price, then if they could have done that somewhere else, then why not bring them here and do it? If that is what you're thinking is the case, if there's quite a few tractor tires and...
Then we should be suspicious.
Can I jump in?
Yeah.
We haven't seen that. We haven't seen that yet. So far, they've been just the sandbox-type tire. Haven't had anybody that we've stopped and picked up six or eight, ten of them.
Good.
So...
Good.
I mean, I'm not scared. I'm just here to tell you that things were not going in the right direction here.
I understand, Jeff. Yep, thank you.
I agree with waiting until after the fall collection. See if this people not working continues to clean out more garages.
Good point.
Yep.
Yeah, because maybe in the fall, we'll start having that discussion then about what the next contrast, what the recycling, and we may change stuff anyway. So if we can just roll it all into one big thing, or roll it all into one... Again, I appreciate, you know, the heads up and, hey, this is going higher and, you know, this is kind of a trending in a downward slope. You know, that's good work. We appreciate that, but... We appreciate that, but I'm not sure it's time for us to take action yet, I guess.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, if we have no one making a motion to increase it, we can just move on and circle back towards the end of the year. J4, discussion or action, award of Park Street Phase Four.
Hey, thank you. This, in your packet, you'll see that this was, this memo is in your packet. We were awarded $275,000 from OPWC. This is the issue two money to finish this project. We've gotten several grant funds from OPWC for all of Park Street. This is the last phase of Park Street and looking to finish it off. So Hoanbrink Excavating was the lowest bidder at $499. Chad's on the line. If anybody has questions, I don't really have anything else to say, but... Chad, do you have anything to add?
Nothing specific, just it will, this was originally one of our long-term control plan projects. And it's just cleaning up some of the last remaining items we have in those neighborhoods that were required.
Do we have a timeframe?
Done by...
Chad?
Yeah, done by November 21st.
We haven't had a pre-construction meeting yet, although on Friday, Hoanbrink contacted me and asked when I was bringing this to council. And I told them Monday, they would like to start as soon as they can, but they'll have to start soon to meet their completion date.
Thank you.
Is this the project that includes repaving Park Court?
Chad, does this include repaving Park Court?
Yes.
Is it on there?
Yes.
Yeah. For to consist to replace the existing waterline or servicing Park Court?
Okay.
Sentence two.
So you're going to be trying to get home.
I know. But when it's done.
Sure. Good.
Well, the, just one single note too. Sorry, I forgot to mention this too. I mean, it says it in here, but the original engineer's estimate was $475. Obviously, bids came back at $499. It depends on, it depends on the project where, you know, bids come in at compared to the estimates. Some of our bids have been coming in higher, some of them actually come in lower total project costs. So it's to a varying degree that, you know, we're, you know, we get. It just, you know, moves back. So the remaining amount would, we're proposing here to come out of the sanitary sewer fund since it's a sewer project in nature.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to award the contract to Hoanbrink Excavating.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Hey, Rox, please call the roll.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Okay, that has been awarded. Item J5 is Discussion or Action Healthcare Cost Committee Recommendations for Regarding 2020 and 2021 Wellness Program. And just need to direct the law director to draft legislation for that. Any other information?
Just that we're looking at the, so the timelines changed a little bit due to COVID. Chapman and Chapman, formerly known as Chapman and Chapman, is now Majus Group. What, timelines have changed a little bit. So what we're looking at doing is continuing with the wellness program that we have in place where employees and any spouses that are on our program or on our healthcare would have to get a wellness check. And what that would do, if we hit a certain percentage, which has been working the past few, two years at least, would lower our premium percentage by 1%. Typically, it's an increase every year of, you know, 6% to 8%. So and over time, you know, statistically, I'm just kind of doing a rehash here. I don't know if you want the full explanation, but the rehash is that statistically, over time, having a wellness program in place where people are getting wellness checks will ultimately lower your healthcare premiums going forward because you're catching symptoms of things that would otherwise be let go for longer periods of time. So that said, we're looking at having employees and spouses get their wellness check completed by December 31st this year. If they don't, then that employee's healthcare premium would go up by $50 set rate. Then also, in addition to that, for 2021, we'd be going from January 1st to through June 30th. That's a little bit different than previous years because what the BORMA group would like to do now is have wellness checks done at the beginning of the year. And then each individual pool, community, whoever it is, without giving names, if there's a higher number of certain conditions, for instance, just giving examples, more people with diabetes will have more programs that are tailored towards, and educational programs, whatever else tailored towards that. Or if somebody, you know, if there's an obesity issue or some other health-related issue that's identified for that community or for that portion of the pool, then programs can be tailored to address some health concerns related to those. So that's something that was decided by the BORMA group. The reason why we're looking at just 2020, 2021 is that our contract is up in 2021. So therefore, we would, as we do every time, the renewal of that contract with BORMA, since that's up, we just, you know, we, for lack of a better word, shop around to make sure that we're in the right place. It's most cost-effective and provides the best service for us.
Will the health screeners come to us or employees going to go to them?
Is this, you're talking about the wellness checks? Wellness checks are for, they're for primary care physicians. So it's also to help establish relationships with your primary care physicians.
So we go there?
Yeah, or you can use the Activate Clinic too.
Should there be allowance for people who don't want to go to the doctor right now?
Well, that's at the end of the year, right?
I think that's kind of what's being said. A lot of people are putting those kinds of well checks off because they prefer not to put themselves in...
Potentially harmful situation.
I don't know. It's right to... I'm in favor of it. I just don't know if right now it's... I don't know what the right word is, but do you expect them to do it or pay more money?
Now, part of this is this, like, blood tests and things like that?
Yeah, it's lab work and your normal wellness check.
So they could do part of it, I guess Skype meeting or a WebEx meeting or something with their doctor, but they still would have to go get some blood work done at the lab to complete it all?
Yeah. Chad's on to, he's the chair of the committee. Chad, did you have anything to add to that or comment?
Just that the committee unanimously approved the recommendation to council in an effort to continue the program we have and also to try to get our rates, to keep our rates as low as possible. We are aware that they're changing our schedule, but we will switch first of the year. We have received approval to go ahead and get those wellness screenings this year. And we are eligible to get them again next year. Before, you could only get them once per year, and that wasn't calendar year, that was once per year. Now it's once per calendar year. So employees could get them in, say, November and go back in January, February and get it again to stay in line with what our insurance is requiring. But any type of blood test or anything above and beyond is strictly up to the individual's doctor. I'll give an example because it's myself. Last year, my doctor did not request blood work. I went in and had an interview with my doctor and she approved that as being what I needed at that time. So it is up to each individual doctor as to how elaborate that wellness check is. And with having access to the Activate Clinic now, that opens it up to a lot more people and makes it much more easily accessible.
All right, thank you, Chad. So for today, we're just looking to make a motion to have the law director draft legislation. And this will be brought to a future meeting so we can discuss this a little bit further.
Yep.
I'll entertain a motion to direct the law director to draft legislation.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Rox, please call the roll.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item J6, Discussion or Action Update to the Parking and Stop and Yield Intersections of the Traffic Schedules. Same here, direct the law director to draft legislation.
This would be for Park Street Parking now that that project's done. So to match that new segment of what was just completed with the rest of Park Street. Four-way stop consideration at Sheffield and Park and the parking on Old School Drive. I believe that's it.
Okay, could have a motion to direct the law director to draft legislation.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, Rox, please call the roll.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Okay, item J7, Discussion or Action Certify and File Annual Special Assessments With the County Auditor for Placement and Collection on the 2020 Tax Duplication, duplicates payable in the year 2021. Sounds like our law director's going to be pretty busy here coming up.
I'm guessing, knowing him, it's already done.
Okay.
I know you can't hear me, but yes.
All right, anything to add on this or just have a motion to direct the law director?
This is just the annual ordinance that we do every year and auditor likes it by August 30th.
Okay, thank you, Kelly.
A motion.
Second.
Okay, Rox, please call the roll.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item J8, Discussion or Action Accepting the Amounts and Rates As Determined by the Budget Commission and Authorizing the Necessary Tax Levies And Certifying Them to the County Auditor For the 2020 Tax Duplicates Payable in Year 2021, Directing Law Director to Draft Legislation. Kelly, anything to add on this?
No, other than this is the information from the tax budget that council passed a couple weeks ago.
Okay, thank you. Can you handle this one too, Billy?
We got it, thanks.
Okay. Have a motion for this as well?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay, Rox, please call the roll.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item J9, hurry to pile on a little bit more. Discussion or Action Approve to Apply for Issue Two Funds For Year 2021 And Direct the Law Director to Draft Legislation.
This is the annual item also. We need legislation to be able to apply for issue two funds from the state. This year's project is over House Interceptor. For next year, I don't think we have anything really specified, but typically they're long-term control plan type projects.
Thank you. We have the motion.
Removed.
Second.
Hey, Rox, please call the roll.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Okay, that's been approved as well. I'll go around the table here and start with Kelly.
Thank you. Staff is working on completing the income tax returns that we received from the deadline of July 15th. And we want to thank the public for being patient with us. And we only have the drive-through open because of the COVID. The audit is almost complete, so that's a good sign. And then this Wednesday coming up at 12:30, the Office of Budget Management is holding another webinar for the program update for the House Bill 481 for the COVID money. So we'll hear some more information on what is allowable and not allowable.
All right, thank you. Anything else?
No, that's all. Thanks.
Hey, Molly?
I'm good.
All right, Jeff?
One item. I just want to make sure that there's a big section of concrete coming out of the curb right across the road from me. I know the property owner said something last week, but I want to make sure it gets done.
Okay.
Corner Strong and Sheffield, north side of the road, it's right in his driveway. I don't want him, there's a big hole in the concrete curbing and he's got a brand new concrete driveway. That's going to start eating into his new driveway. That's all I have.
Thank you. Lori?
I meant to ask this when we were talking about Park Street. So Chad, if you could, I just have noticed there's no sidewalk on Park Street, like, from the old project where it picked up going to Sheffield, that half a block or whatever? Will that be done?
Correct. With the completion of the project, those property owners will be receiving letters instructing them to build those sidewalks. They'll be given one year from the date of the letter.
Okay, so they were different than the other end of Park?
Correct, because they never had sidewalks, so they're responsible to put those in. Correct, because they never had sidewalks, so they're responsible to put those in. The property owners on Park Street from Sheffield River View had sidewalk previously, so they were put in as part of the project.
Right. Then, another question, is that, was there grass planted in that new area, or is that just from the the dirt they brought in, and grass has yet to be planted?
There was grass planted. However, it's been a very dry summer. They will be required to come back in the fall and address some topsoil and seeding issues.
And weeds? I just feel bad. I see people out there every day on their hands and knees pulling those weeds out, and I think, you're going to get those pulled out, and then there's going to be nothing because I don't really see a whole lot of grass growing in between.
There's a few property owners that watered it as soon as we seeded it, and they're getting, they're getting some some grass to come up. Without water, they won't get grass.
Okay. Just wondering. That's all for me.
All right. Thank you. Jason?
With everything going on, I think we're trying to highly encourage people to wear masks when out and about, when not with family, to remain social distancing, keep the fight going. Roxanne, you sent us an email a week or so ago about training for everybody, blue sky training?
Ethics question?
Ethics, is that what it was? And you can be a representative? Did you get answers back from anybody on there?
Sunshine, right?
Sunshine, that's what it does. Yeah, sunshine, yeah. Okay.
Usually, there's a blue sky when there's sunshine, but.
Yeah, well, it's blue sky in the financial world about what you can talk about, what you can't talk about. It's the same thing. Okay. Just curious where we're at with that. Thank you. That's all.
All right. Ken?
I have nothing.
Okay. Dan?
I don't have anything today.
Okay. Ross?
I am all good. Thank you, sir.
Billy?
Briefly, I don't know if anybody knows or has any information about the Purdue Pharma case that a number of municipalities and other governmental entities have filed against Purdue Pharma in relation to the oxycodone and the various other narcotic prescriptions that they had, that there were a number, there are a number of cases going on individually and collectively, governmental entities attempting to assert very, a lot of different claims against Purdue Pharma. In response, Purdue has, is attempting, I think, at this point, to file bankruptcy. As a part of that process, they put out a call for any municipality that may have a claim against Purdue Pharma to assert it, I mean, not specifically, but just to put their name down on the list essentially, that they would be interested in asserting a claim in this, in this case. The City of Napoleon did add its name to that list. We have some potential claims here. As a part of the process, a number of municipalities and other entities have worked, worked out a scheme to try to determine approximately how much money each municipality or other governmental body might be owed on behalf of its citizens. The the number listed for, and I would highly doubt we would ever see this, but the number listed for the City of Napoleon is $4.6 million. So, we have put our name down, that, yeah, fingers crossed, at some point, $4.6 million comes to the City of Napoleon in this, in these actions here. We've done everything we can do to assert our claim, just on the off chance that some money does come our way, maybe some does. So, but we have, we've put our name down. If this, I doubt this would be a popular thing to do, but I'll throw it out there. I've begun drafting a mandatory mask ordinance if the city is interested in it. If not, it'll sit there. But it's ready, if near-ready anyway. If council wanted to do something similar, businesses inside and such, so we could talk about it, or we could ignore it, that's up to you. It's not for me. But it's, I've started drafting, and it wouldn't take very much long, very much time to finish it. That's all I got.
My feeling is the governor's going to make that a moot point pretty soon.
Potentially. And if he does, then great.
Thank you, Billy.
Thank you, Council President. So, Kelly and I a while back said that we, by July 20th, we would have recommendations for use of the CARES Act. Just so everybody knows, we were denied for the use of those CARES Act funds for applying it to rates, and so, at least at this point. But there is a a team at AMP that is actively looking into that, to see if some of those use restrictions can be lifted. Also, it's, it's very, I'm going to just say that it's, it's difficult to use these funds. It's, you know, they're giving us three, you know, $203,000, but it's difficult to use the funds. So, we're trying to find out ways that that benefit the City of Napoleon as an organization the most. Obviously, we're looking at general fund expenses first and all of our other expenses. We are looking at staffing adjustments at the fire department right now. We're trying to figure out what needs to be applied for out of the FEMA PA grant that was approved by council and applied for recently, and then what can be used for CARES Act. So, there's, you know, there's, there's other places and sources of funds that we're applying for. Obviously, you know, we want to apply for, get as much as we can if we can use it. I also would just made, wanted to make sure I pointed out that the the county did roll out a business assistance grant program. Deadlines for the first round of that, the applications are due tomorrow. And so, they may be coming to us to see if we wanted to help supplement some of the funds that they have. Just wanted to put that out there. Right now, the, there's not a lot of, a lot of detail on how the funds can be used, but it's, these funds are audited, so we just want to make sure that we're cautious in how, you know, like, for instance, the county has, is allowing for direct payment to whoever applies, up to, I think, $5,000 without showing any, any receipts, and then whatever's not spent, they have to go back and collect on it. So, that's, that's kind of a tricky thing where if, you know, we were to roll something out or or tag along with it, I think it would be better if it was more of a reimbursement type, type thing, where we can make sure that we get all of our auditing and and grant documentation in place so that if we were ever audited, that we meet the criteria. So, just wanted to throw that out there in case you hear something that is tomorrow. We'll see what what comes of that. And then, last thing is, there is a business assistance, I'm sorry, OBM conference call on 12:30 on Wednesday that we'll, we'll have staff sitting in on.
You always talked about the.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, that's right. That's right. Yeah. So, that's, that's coming up. Hopefully, hopefully, we get better guidance on how we can use the funds. So, sorry, we don't have anything, but it's really unclear on how, seems very restrictive in what we can use the funds for. But we do have, with this balancing act, you can't double dip. You gotta, you know, either apply for FEMA funds or use CARES Act funding. The beauty of the FEMA funding is it's 75% grant, 25% match, but we can use the CARES Act funding to match it. So, we're hoping to use that for, to address some of our staffing levels and the arrangement that we have at the, at the fire department for responses right now.
To dovetail off that.
Yeah.
I spoke to Congressman Latta's office in defiance, Kathy Shaver, and she put me in contact with his, basically, his, his main legislative aide in in DC, and that person called me and left a voicemail about, you know, this, this next round of stimulus is in Congress right now. It's, there's two different sides. Everybody wants something, so there's probably a deal out there. How it comes, what it's going to look like, nobody knows yet, but the congressman is in favor of taking some controls off of dollars already out there for us to be able to kind of spend as we see fit, instead of being kind of caught in this very, very small sandbox, which you can spend on, which you can't. So, more to follow. Congressman Latta is kind of aware of what's going on with the current funds down here at our level. So, just, can I just talk, just dovetail on that?
Yeah, it's a big deal. It's a big deal. The last thing I guess I have is that the, I did read another article about the water issue. It was in the Liberty Press. There was a comment in there about grant funds being used for a project for their water line. I, I have an issue with another governmental agency granting funds to the detriment of our community. So, I've questioned that profusely to the contact in Findlay. I did elevate it to the, to the Columbus level and the director level at the Findlay office. So, hopefully, we get some answers, and I just can't see, you know, why another governmental agency would grant funds to an entity that would be detrimental to another community with a lower MHI. So, I just wanted to make that statement on record, wanted you all to be aware of that, what was going on, and the emails that have been going back and forth between myself and the agency representative. It's now working its way up, and that's at the USDA. So, just wanted to point that out, and that's all I have.
Thank you. The only thing I have, I just want to mention, the great job I saw of the finance department. I know it wasn't April 15th, but still was tax deadline last week, and I stopped by and happened to see how busy they were, and I'm sure they had some long, long hours this week. Just want to thank them for their hard work. Okay. Moving on to item K, executive sessions. I don't think we have any listed, do we? Item L, approve payments of bills and financial reports. In the absence of any objections or corrections, the payment of bills and financial report shall stand approved.
Question on the overtime at the police department. I noticed it's up again. Is there reasoning for that again?
I'd have to take a look at the calls.
One, one pay period was over $3,000. I think the next two were 25, 2600. I was just curious, because it's, it's beating the electric department. Electric department's usually tops.
Yeah, with the outage calls.
Sure. Let me know what's going on, please.
Yep. Pay period, that would have been, would that have been around 4th of July?
There's, I think, three different segments that we got. Just let me know, please.
Yep. I can put that in the weekly FYI.
Sure. Are we still short staffed or?
We, yeah, we're one down. Still one person down.
Patrolman or dispatcher?
Patrolman.
And dispatcher?
No.
You hired someone? I didn't realize there was one that was hired.
I will say this, though. Here's, here's an issue that I've, I've seen during COVID, a lot of vacations weren't being taken. Now that we're coming out of that and people are traveling more, there's a lot more vacations being scheduled. So, it's, there's a balancing act of staffing levels going on also. I mean, that could be attributable, attributable to that as well.
I was just curious.
Can I, can I add?
Oh, yeah. Yep.
Yeah. It's been up the last three, you're absolutely correct, of our vacation schedule, because the guys were not in vacation.
Is that the sole reason, in your opinion?
We are on pace, though, for the year. We're averaging about 1,500 per pay, which is about normal where we're at for the last three or four years, on average, as it rolls out.
I was just curious.
Thank you, chief.
Yep, you're welcome.
And that vacation issue really does cover, it's across the board, so there's a lot of scheduling going on.
Sure. Any other objections or corrections or questions? Hearing none, they stand approved? Could have motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Hey, Rox, please call the roll.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori? Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.